...in the Tory, will not be attended this evening. Councilmember Rovell.
Here.
Streamelberg.
Present.
You.
Please leave us.
I'm happy to report that local construction on Bellev Avenue and Union Avenue were mostly completed as of this evening. Shifting has been done, and that gave a no cost to the township. That was done as a result of an agreement with public service. We will continue with our road project sometime in June. Baseball three days, Saturday at 2:06, all are invited to attend at 9:15 a.m. at the stadium. That's it.
Uh, yes. Uh, Kevin, our street cleaning efforts are not being done. They're not ticketing any cars. The people are complaining they're not getting the street cleaned. The other day I went up to Wachang Avenue. There was about 12 cars and both sides of the street, and it really looks disgusting there. And what's happening is we're not, if they're not moving their cars, they usually get tickets. But no one's getting tickets, and I guess the town has a lot of money, so I guess you don't have to, you know, do that. Also, the, um, on the corner of Wachang Avenue there, there are weeds and bushes that have to be at least 10 to 12 feet high. The corner of Wachang and Cross.
Wachang and Cross.
And this has been going on for at least five years. It's been, uh, usually in the summer that we have them, but now it's just all over the weed. It looks terrible. So if you report that to the health department, that's it.
I just had a question. I know you asked a question about rats at school four. Did you ever get that?
Absolutely. The health department did an inspection, and there's no racings on any rats. Like I said, last summer, there were some spotted complaints throughout the several sections of the town. They've made a job, but at the moment, no rats.
Just had a quick question. I saw where they, they basically passed Doral at the beginning there, but just as you come around, off of Hoover there.
Yes.
There's a bunch of, is that ours or is it Oldfield's?
I instructed the city engineer to measure up that because I believe it's Doral and section of town shouldn't have it. Shouldn't have it. This is very important to me. Thanks.
Thank you, Kevin. Over participation. Your motion, open for public participation.
Second.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Streamelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy.
I was only kidding, Mr. Kennedy.
What are we getting on the municipal budget? We had an appearance before the local finance board on April 9th, which was canceled by the local finance board. We have been instructed to include our budget with the understanding that the waiver for the refunding bond to submit the budget as if we were granted that. So that only came last week to us. We're in the process, last week was a short week. We had Good Friday off, CFO and police department and fire department and myself, we can just finalize a few things. We also received the fireman's grant, which had to adjust the fireman's budget. So as a result of those things, it has been slightly delayed. We should be able to introduce our budget at the next council meeting and after.
The pork ban you made by February 20th, and any of those standards that you stated on grants and all, you can just amend the budget. It's amendment progress. But we should know when the board of ed introduce that tentative budget, and then they amend it, whether it's grants or anything. Why isn't it done? Do you hear that, dear?
Traditionally, it's not just Bellev. It's the county, it's the state. There is deadlines there. The state sometimes, they're required to adopt their budget by June 30th in many cases, as you know, they can delay as well.
It appears to be one of the first meetings, Jennifer, before my wife didn't even park her car, so I had one more question. These are one leaks all over the county that go on for weeks and weeks and months, and nobody, public works or police or anybody notices it. Now, since February, the fire hydrant by the Dairy Queen or Dairy, whatever, there's like Union and Bellev Avenue, the hydrant's been leaking for over two months. Nobody notices it. The water's leaking right down the garden into the, and you know, I've seen firemen on duty or off duty buying an ice cream cone for refreshment. Nobody sees these leaks?
Uh, the firemen would report that to public works at my office. The public works department has been inundated. We've got a number of water main breaks. As you know, the winter was very harsh on the system. When we had a lot of trees disrupt the system, the engineer decided that it would be best to order new regulators, which we are in the process of buying. Actually, we received a grant for new regulators of $350,000. The regulators are in the process of being manufactured. Once the regulators are in, that should curtail a lot of the water main breaks as it has better control on the pressure of our system. And we are also looking into the relining. I've known you suggested that on numerous occasions. I sat with the engineer and asked him to implement a relining plan so that we can certainly reline some of the water mains. We will also begin flushing the water lines in June and July. Notices will be sent out to the residents in advance so that they can prepare for that overnight. We're going to hope to have that done in the evening hours so that we don't disrupt people during the break.
The cleaning line I discussed over 20 is, there has been more cleaning line projects in the council manager form government that go, that's what's creating major part of leaks. So stop paving these streets, again, same thing, unlike a broken record, until we fix the empty project. So please.
It's on the list.
And I, I hope all your people have this kind of attendance. I'd like to see, normally there's four or five of us here. Show up at every meeting, see what's going on with your government. Thank you.
Uh, at the last meeting, I already got, we got school number four with the garbage, and I did mention school number five, and I did watch, and it was, I, I don't know what the schedule is for the Board of Education garbage pickup, but of course, when they do have their lunch program on Friday, and then the garbage is filled up, so there was two dumpsters full, and it was five days later that the garbage people painted. But Flaherty painted school five, and they blocked the garbage truck from getting to one of the dumpsters, and nobody came out of the school to move the cars. So they were only able to get one dumpster of garbage out of there. So that is a problem too. The lot is big enough that they didn't have to park right in front of the garbage dumpsters knowing that there's going to be garbage pickup. So you can make a note of that to know that they should stay away from there when the garbage is going to be picked up, and then maybe we won't have that problem. And then to find out why it has to lay there for five days because then that we will have a problem if that does continue.
My name is Joe Fornarado. I live at 523 Union Avenue in Bellev. I was at the school today trying to talk to the superintendent of schools. I want to find out about my tax rate, what it's going to be with all the money they're spending at the school. Well, it just happened to be that she wasn't in. Somebody else was at a meeting, so I got no information. Mr. May, do you know anything as far as an approximately, what kind of tax we're going to get with the school spending?
We have an information, we have information that the budget on the school is going up 1.34 million. 1.34 million, which means $165 for the average tax unit. But that's our final budget. 193? I'm sorry, 193.
Well, first of all, I'll be 89 years old, born and raised in a town of Bellev. I've never heard such rumors and lies in an election of this kind. I've been to a lot of elections, and I've worked hard for a lot of good people. Now, as far as what we have now, we're getting progress. Stores are being opened, apartments are being done, shopping centers are being renovated. Now, as far as what we're going to get, I don't know. But as far as people that are in the school system, running for township jobs, and they're controlled by certain people, I don't think it's fair to the renter or the taxpayer. Because if a person is getting taxes raised, he's going to raise his tenants. So I want the people to understand that. Today I heard there's a lot of flyers at the senior building. When I put a sign at the senior building to vote for my people, the police got calls, oh, there's a sign for Kimball and the rest of the guys that are running such and such, get them off town property. Well, today, they had their stooges put signs out all the way. I call them stooges. I'll tell you why. My brother's here. He comes from Silver Lake. A man went to the, that disco party that they had in Silver Lake and said to him, your son's on a job to Ray Kimball. He's not even married. So you see what goes on? I call them stooges, and they are. If you're doing what people tell you and it's not true, I don't think it's fair. But anyway, I want to say with my experience in the service, I work for the state, I work for the government, and I work for the municipality, and I'm a former commissioner. When we had our budget at the end of the year, we had money left over, went back into the general fund. So I want the people that are here to know, let's keep the people in office that are here. Thank you.
Look for Fuji. Uh, to the chair, that tenth of $193 increase, that's on the average assessed value?
Mm-hmm.
Which is what?
Uh, $238,000.
Patricia Wells, to get back to the street cleaning talks, there was a message on our answering machines that as of April 1st, that they started reinforcing the parking tickets, and my street was one of the streets to be cleaned today, and they did ticket my street. It was cars on my street that were ticketed, and my street was clean. So I don't know where that's coming from, because I even called town hall myself because I was concerned that the streets weren't getting cleaned back a month ago, and they reinforced that because of the weather, April 1st would be the deadline for cars to be moved off the street.
Hey Hank, my partner to Harris. Uh, Mr. Kimball, please don't be nervous.
I can't hear you, so I won't be nervous.
I have no complaints, only praise. I do want to publicly thank Steve Rovell, Kevin Esposito, and Joe D. from Essex County. Since we have had our street widened and gained 23 spots, when my doorbell rings at night, I am not afraid it's going to be a complaint. And I pray every night for those men that helped me attain 23 parking places. It is a pleasure. Thank you all.
We appreciate it, but thank you. This whole council will vote on that, so.
Yeah, but I dealt specifically with them.
All right, that's who you dealt with, your board council, okay.
Yes, I, uh, my name is Rose King.
Could you step over here, because I, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
My name is Rose King. I live in 14 Branchwood Drive. I've come here about the potholes on Columbia Avenue and Branchwood Drive. Because Branchwood Drive is the one way, we have to go down Columbia Avenue, and Columbia Avenue is a road close to potholes. When are they going to get fixed? I called a week ago. I got the date and time, but I called public first. They're supposed to do it the next day. This was last week, and I haven't got done yet. Is there a schedule? Is there a justice? When you go visit potholes on the streets that I mentioned?
Bill. The mayor of Mar... I'm sorry, close to go.
Okay, he's answering my question.
Well, that's our public safety works director.
Because it seems like it takes so long, because this has been over months since the snow don't stop, and the roads have been worse. And I made a mistake in Park County, my mistake. I didn't know we had county roads. County don't fix state roads. The city hasn't did anything about state roads.
Well, no, we've done more potholes this year than ever.
You haven't been by street. I know about the mayor. I didn't, I didn't want to ask the mayor.
Before your lunchtime tomorrow, you're done.
Okay.
Hey, I wanted to.
Hey, I'm Mike Binone. I'm inside in 23 West Bellev Avenue Caldwell. I'm the Bellev Education Association president. I'm very proud of that. Bellev Education Association consists of teachers, secretaries, and support staff. I'm also a co-founder of the Bellev United Coalition, which consists of those people who either reside and/or work in Bellev. This is the third meeting, town council meeting that I've been to this year. The first meeting I, I came to, I'm proud to say that as a whole, the council resolved that they were, they were going to support our efforts to be yay in Bellev Education Association's efforts to, um, to fair labor practices and quality education here to all of our Bellev students. So that was really, you know, finding time in, you know, our teachers, for, for all of our teachers and our staff workers and the association as a whole. But something that meeting was very disturbing to me, and I, I know I left here and I pondered it on the way home, and what happened in that meeting is a public employee stood up, and they, that person accused Councilwoman Strohlo Burke of using harassment, intimidation, and bullying tactics to coerce town employees to support her in her efforts to this upcoming election. So whenever an accusation like that is made, that's pretty serious, so I kind of had to think about that all the way home, and I had to think about the validity of that statement. Because, you know, you just don't go around accusing people of things of that sort unless you really have, you know, a good idea, you have some backing behind it. So I couldn't get, I couldn't get away from saying that my grandfather told me, you know, way back when, he must have told me over a thousand times, the thousand times that he didn't tell me, my mother said the same exact statement for another thousand times. My grandfather's presently, oh, not presently, he, he raised his hand, I see the cringing village, then my parents moved to Bellev, my father's son's Stephen from Silver Lake. So I tell you this because I'm sure all of you have heard this statement or this saying. It's probably not new to any of you here, but the saying goes like this. Introduce me to your friends, and I'll tell you a lot about yourself. Okay? And that kept striking me as I was driving home, because I kept saying to myself, well, Councilwoman Strohlo Burke is befriending two present Board of Education members who, notably to the Bellev Education Association, do use harassment, intimidation, and bullying tactics to govern and to try to get campaign money out of our teachers and our staff. Okay? They, they, I mean, we, we know that. That much we do know. Okay? So I have to look at that and say, although I don't know you, Councilwoman Burke, I have to say that, you know, use that saying as introduce me to your friends, and I'll tell you a lot about yourself. So I, I'm here to say that neither myself nor the Bellev Education Association will ever support any candidate, politically or otherwise, that uses harassment, intimidation, and bullying tactics to govern. It's wrong. It's wrong for the people that work here. It's wrong for the people that live here. Okay? So I, I can't speak on behalf of the Bellev Education Association, because that has to go through a process. But I can speak on behalf of myself and those who support our quest for fair labor practices when I say that Mr. Kimball and Mr. Kennedy, anything that you need from myself or from any of our members that support this quest for fair labor practices, please let us know, because we support you 100%. As of now, at the four meetings now, I have not heard that accusation about either one of you. Okay? And that is, that is very gratifying. Ms., Ms. Burke, all I have to say is that, you know, maybe it's, maybe we have to think of, you know, different, different tactics to use besides these tactics, because they're outdated, they're, they're, they're deambethal at best, you know, they're not a way to run a community whatsoever. I mean, our members, our teachers, our staff cannot come to school every day and be fearful of their jobs. Nor, nor can any employee ever go to work, and will never stand for it. Will never stand for it. It's not now we'll stand for it, we won't stand, Mr. Kimball, Mr. Kennedy, if that day ever comes that you use those tactics, who will, who will support that even? Okay? So it's not, I don't have an agenda. My agenda is very simple. We, the Bellev Education Association, myself, do not and will never support harassment, intimidation, and bullying tactics to govern our community, our schools, or anything else within our community. All right? So thank you very much, and please, anything you do.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Swoerti Hans. I've been a resident here for 14 years in the township of Bellev. I grew up most of my life in the North, in the north, decided to move here with my husband, who's been here for over 30 years. I just want to address the council by stating that I read that you guys have a resolution this evening about censoring Marie Burke. I believe that this resolution, I'm sorry, I've given everyone an opportunity to speak, but I didn't discuss it in my dissection, but I'm taking an opportunity to speak as well. I just find it this hard for me today. I know that, I know Marie Burke 25 years on a personal basis, and I'm offended by the false light of these allegations that pass upon her character and her public reputation. She caught Marie, she bleeds all these colors of blue gold. I'm horrified and disappointed by the actions that this council is taking and also of the actions of the current administration. These types of backdoor politics is what, is what keeps residents from serving and providing public service and community involvement. I believe that this council has more important issues to take care of, such as taxes, as Mr. Fornarado has pointed out, public works projects that are on the agenda today, and quality of life issues such as addiction and drug distribution here in the city. Instead of wasting our time discussing politics and who supports who, I think we should all work together, try to work towards building a better, a Bellev a better life.
Senator Marshall, pause.
Second.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Streamelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy.
Yes. Senator Marshall, move the second agenda.
We have to call nine time.
I have 10 in the lobby.
Move the table?
Nine, 10, 11?
Nine, 10, 11.
Give me one more, please.
Okay, two. Resolution number nine.
Second agenda.
Kevin, you want us?
No, it is a motion to call. Pro per one.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Streamelberg.
Rovell.
This is my consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
Okay, yes.
Mayor Kennedy.
Yes. Resolution number 10.
No, number nine.
Nine. Nine. We're moving nine. I move nine?
Can you move it? You got that phone.
Oh, okay.
To table. Councilmember Kennedy.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Streamelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy.
Yes. Rule number 10.
Uh, no, yes. No. Yes, I did. Yes, I'm just wanting to have, you know, say I'm, I'm doing a goal ahead.
Quick call roll.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Yep.
Rovell.
Yes.
Streamelberg.
No.
Mayor Kennedy.
Yes. Resolution number nine.
Second.
I have a couple of questions here for our tab attorney and a statement that I would like to make. Mr. Murphy, did you write this resolution?
Actually, it was taken from my motion, it was used by the City of Newark with regard to a public official who had been taped.
Boy, Juan, is it yes or no?
I'm not going to give you a yes or a no.
Well, of course you're not.
What I, the language, the language was taken from a resolution that is quite similar to a situation that unfortunately has arisen with regard to the tape in question, and the language was similar to the language that's, that's been heard over and over again in the tape. And that individual was a member of the governing body, well-known to other members of the governing body, who were shocked when a couple of years later they learned that the racial epithet that was used in this tape was the same. So that governing body felt it was appropriate to censure that particular person, so that was the language that I used.
Okay. So that is your statement? And I'd like you to explain to me what internally authenticated means.
It means that...
Do you have a drawing of three?
By, no, no, by the, by virtue of the, what is contained internally in the tape. For example, I've heard that tape, unfortunately, and it, the, the first voice is clearly Sam Papa. We all know Mr. Papa, he was a member of the planning board here for more than 20 years. And I believe in the beginning of the tape, he says that I stopped by at Marie's house. So what he does is he sets a, a stage, more or less, for who he is, where he is, and what he's doing. Then he leaves a message for Mr. Kennedy on that particular tape, and it is apparent to any objective listener that there is a voice in the background using the racial slur in a very derogatory way, I might add, towards the members of the Bellev community, particularly those that are African-American, but also those that by implication are all minorities. So we've all heard the tape, and that's, that is internally, that is internally, the tape internally validates itself.
Yeah. You can do finish and I'll, I'll continue.
I can't listen to two things at once. You're asking questions, I'm trying to answer them.
Well, I'm keeping quiet, there are people in the audience, Mr. Murphy. Don't get so nervous.
Well, that's fine. If the chair wants to recognize a question, and they have a question, that's fine.
And I'm trying to stop the view.
But the, I believe that the, that the tape speaks for itself.
So that's your statement? And don't forget that you're definitely on the record. My other question is, was the police department involved in this investigation?
A police department?
Our police department was involved in this investigation?
To my knowledge, no.
Okay.
To my knowledge, no. I don't think there's a crime being committed on the tape. I think there is a serious error.
Can I finish now, Mr. Murphy? I have confidence in this mayor and council to see through Mr. Kennedy's political stunts. So for that reason, I have no choice but to put the mayor and council on notice that the person on this tape is not my voice. I strongly urge you...
We will see in about three days.
I strongly, I strongly urge that you both know on Mr. Kennedy's resolution, this is a politically motivated resolution that does not belong in front of the governing body. First of all, this is not Bellev business. That is number one. I have...
Please, please.
I find this resolution that Mr. Kennedy has, has been supposed to be despicable. And these are matters for Democratic... And these are matters for democratic party policies and not the business of the Belville council. I am tired of defending myself. Anyone that knows me will come to my defense because I am a people person who will help anyone in need. These stunts are only in short hair place and only to be victorious. The mayor and councilman Kennedy are using town hall as their political playground. And they need issues to campaign against me. I have lived my life as a person that has supported people of all ethnic groups and I take offense that I am a racist. Do you know what a racist means, Mr. Kennedy? A racist means, a racist means that you're against every ethnic nationality. And that is so, so untrue. We should talk about some of the things you said to me. I am not going to let it affect my desire to say higher voices. And remember, the only vote that counts is the vote of the people of the town of Belville. Everyone that knows me knows I'm not a racist. They're doing this for their own personal gain. Shame, shame on all the ones that believe this.
Shame on you for being a liar.
Thank you.
Marie, I'm calling you a liar. You want to get a lawyer and sue me, you're a liar.